Like we were at Arrowhead Stadium there for a minute. Good afternoon and welcome to the Douglas. Now, what's that one? That one? That one? That one? That one? We're going to try again. Good afternoon and welcome to the October 18th Board of Douglas County Commissioners Work Session. Today, we are talking about the Rural Historic Resource Guide that was just completed. Well, it may have been completed a while ago, but we just got it in our packet. And so we're excited to welcome Caitlin Amerlin, our Heritage Conservation Coordinator. For those of you who are here at the courthouse, just a reminder that our work sessions are for information purposes only. We don't take public comment during work sessions. If you have public comment and you would like to share that with us, you're welcome to join us at our 5:30 business meeting. Caitlin?
All righty. Thank you all. Thank you all so much for having us. Do we want to start with introductions with who's here today? I'll start with myself. I'm Caitlin Amerlin. I'm the Heritage Conservation Coordinator for Douglas County, and I serve as a staff liaison between the Heritage Conservation Council in Douglas County. Mike, would you like to go next?
My name is Mike Delaney. I'm the Chair of the Cultural Heritage Committee on the Heritage Conservation Council.
And I'm Stan Hernley, local architect and wrote the draft of the Resources Guide.
Hi, I'm Megan Bruie. I work at Stan's office, Hernley Associates, and I've been helping with the guide.
All righty. I think we're ready to get started. Okay. Well, so today we're going to be discussing the Rural Historic Resources Guide, entitled Rural Historic Resources Guide, Douglas County. This is an initiative of the Heritage Conservation Council, and this project has been in development since 2021. So it's been about two years in the making. We set out a request for proposals and have now contracted with Hernley Associates, who's joined us today, to research and complete the guide with guidance from HCC and staff. And so just to highlight here at the top, this will be a tool to help in decision-making and future planning about how we can protect and promote historic resources in Douglas County. So it doesn't make any actions in and of itself, but will be a tool for future planning. All right. Oops. Okay, perfect. All righty. So we'll be giving about a 20, 25-minute presentation here off the top that'll go over the background of the project and provide a bit of context for how we got here, and then give an overview of some of the information that's available in the guide, and then finish up with an outline of how this guideline is intended to be used among a different wide variety of partners, and also identify some immediate next steps that we plan to take with the conclusion of this project. There'll be plenty of time for questions and discussion at the end, but feel free to jump in with any questions along the way. All righty. So I wanted to start by providing a bit of context for what we'll be discussing today. So this guide focuses directly on the preservation of historic resources, which are roughly defined as human-built structures that are about 50 years old. So think buildings, farmhouses, barns, but could also include objects like statues or roads and bridges. So really, we're identifying those historic resources in and of themselves. They kind of, their context can be a little bit broader. So it's mostly focused on the structures and less about land use or other issues. So really focusing in on the historic resources. And then with that, I really wanted to acknowledge that the telling of history reflected in architectural context doesn't generally capture all of the human heritage of Douglas County. So some stories can be enhanced with the preservation of these structures, while others must be shared in other ways and through other means. So really kind of setting that heritage in a much larger umbrella, and historic preservation is one piece of that heritage of Douglas County. All right. So jumping into the information itself, this project is really the culmination of a lot of work over about 10 years, surveying historic resources in Douglas County. As you can see on the map there, it is mostly blue now. It used to be a big patchwork between a bunch of different other ways, but essentially, all of the unincorporated areas of Douglas County have been surveyed for historic resources. So the survey started in 2011 with the inception of the Heritage Conservation Council, and they have been completed in a systematic approach. So it was mostly done in a one or two township intervals, and was first started with a reconnaissance survey that basically gave context and lay of the land, and then that was followed by an intensive survey that dug deeper into each of the resources there and helped produce a lot of data. And so with each of these surveys, there was an individual survey report that was completed with each one, and then also the individual data was submitted to the Kansas Historic Resource Inventory, which is the full database of all the historic resource information in the state of Kansas. And as you can see, that map on the top right is kind of a large zoom of Kansas, and you can see just how unique this work that Douglas County has invested in in identifying and learning more about our rural historic resources. That volume is really unlike any, most other communities in the state. So this, this work is really important and fairly unique.
What's the red versus the blue?
So the red are demolished or structures that are no longer there. So that's the red. Blue is surveyed, inventoried. The purple crosses are on the National Register, and the green crosses are just on the State Register. But the National Register is both state and national. I think that's all the little pictures on there. So you can really get a sense of just the density of data that was collected here. And so that really goes into the need for this guide and a place to kind of capture what all that data means in one spot, and then help identify what we can do next with the information. And so that's what the guide is here. So I have here the table of contents for the guide itself. Just about every point in this guide could be an hour or two-long presentation, so we're just going to go over the basics here. And for anyone who's listening, you're welcome to read the guide and dive deeper into all of these topics, but we won't be able to cover it all today, but kind of just giving an overview of where we're going next. All righty. Stan and Megan, are you guys ready? All right.
Thanks for that introduction, Caitlin. So I'm going to start with going over Chapter 3, the Historic Resources of Douglas County, but I first wanted to start by just kind of touching on a point that Caitlin made. She showed that map with all the blue points on it. So 83% of those dots that are in the rural areas, or 83% of the resources in KHRI are a result of the HCC surveys. So it's just really great work that the county's doing. Next, please. So, start with Chapter 3, the Historic Resources. We started by analyzing the existing information that we have. So through KHRI and the survey reports, we were able to look at the age, function, materials, height, and condition of all the buildings in the county. And this gave us kind of a jumping point for what information we wanted to include in the guide and the opportunities that our county has. Based on function, the resources were split pretty evenly between domestic and agriculture. So domestic being like residential farmhouses, such as the one pictured here, or agricultural, such as the barn in Marion Township also pictured here, and then the other 12% being a different type of building. And we'll get more into that on the next slide. And so another way that we analyzed the resources was through development patterns, and there were four primary development patterns or types of resources that we found. First being farm-related, and that was the most common throughout the county. This includes structures like barns, granaries, and farmhouses, as well as other resources that were like landscape features or items, such as stone fences and windmills. The second type of resources were small communities. This includes Clinton and Binland. They were the hub for commercial and residential activity for farmsteads, and so they have more commercial resources. A good example, this is the Clinton Store. The third type being cultural resources. These were often in small communities, but not always. These include cemeteries, schools, and churches. And then the fourth being lakeside developments, and these include Lakeview Lake, Lone Star Lake, and Clinton Lake. The resources associated with these were the lake itself, the dam if it was man-made, such as Lone Star Lake and Clinton Lake, and then cabins that may be around the lake, such as those around Lakeview Lake and Lone Star. I have Lone Star Lake Dam pictured in this slide, and I just wanted to mention that it's recently been listed on the State Register, and it's on its way to being listed on the National Register. Next slide. That brings me to my next point. So we also looked at resources that were potentially eligible for historic listing. Most resources in the county were not eligible, about 60% not eligible for listing, and this was due to a variety of reasons. Sometimes owners had put synthetic siding over historic siding, or they had replacement windows, and these made the buildings not eligible for listing. But I think it's also important to note that a third of the buildings or resources in the county are eligible for either state or national listing, such as the farmstead pictured here. And so now that we know what kind of exists, or we have an idea of what exists in the county, we'll move on to Chapter 4, which is the risks to historic resources and incentives for our historic resources. One of the greatest risks for historic resources is being underutilized. This picture here is Simmons Point in Marion Township, or it was in Marion Township, but it was underutilized and it's no longer existing. Next slide. So this slide provides a list of the most common types of underutilized buildings we found in the county. Many of these buildings were built for very specific purposes, such as granaries for storing grain and corn, or smokehouses for smoking meats. And they're really difficult to convert to new uses. Another reason they're underutilized is because we've made such great technological advances that we don't need these types of buildings anymore. It's not listed on here, but outhouses is one that comes to mind. Next, please. There are many risks to historic structures, and I can't name them all in this presentation, but one of the biggest ones is also roofing failures. It's usually the first step to a long downward spiral for historic resource. So these are some examples pictured here, the horse stable, a barn, and a farmhouse. And the interior picture of the farmhouse really shows that it's the first step to a long downward spiral. The problem started with a roof failure, but obviously the floor and walls are much more deteriorated, and it's not structurally sound. And so now that we have an idea of the risks and what exists, I'll turn it over to Stan to talk about incentives.
So the second half of Chapter 5 starts to talk about incentives for preserving historic resources. So we've identified what those resources are, and we've identified what some of the risks are. And now we're trying to look at what are the positive things that will incentivize keeping those resources. So some of those are financial incentives, and some of those are non-financial incentives, and I'll talk a little bit about each of those. On the financial side, it's really a combination of grants and tax credits. On the grant side of things, there are various entities that have grants. The Kansas Barn Alliance has a small grant that can help with some barn studies. HCC has a grant program that 2023 is going to allocate, or has allocated $120,000 in grants. Some of that is for historic preservation, some is for cultural, other cultural and environmental types of projects. So other than local grants, there's also grants through the state of Kansas. The Kansas Historical Society has a Heritage Trust Fund grant, and the county is actually using a grant from there for the foundation waterproofing project here at the courthouse. Those grants are available for property owners, but it needs to be a historic listed building. The state also has an HPF, Heritage Preservation Fund, grant that is available for nonprofits and governmental entities. Those grants have been used by the HCC to support some projects as well. So the five properties that are listed, Anderson Farmstead, Barnes Farmstead, Lone Star Lake, Sowers Crawford, Binland Fairgrounds, all five of those, we wrote National Register nominations last year for those five, and that project was supported through the HCC plus an HPF grant as well.
Stan, I'll interrupt you just a sec. This project itself was funded by the HPF grant.
There we go.
Yes.
So those are the main grant kinds of programs. There are some other potential financial incentives that aren't in place yet that the Resource Guide recommends considering, and I'll talk about those a little bit more later on. So the other side of financial incentives is tax credits, and the tax credits are available at two different levels. So there's a state tax credit, and there's a federal tax credit. The state tax credits are available for essentially any property that's historic listed, but it's available when you're rehabilitating something on the building. And just a year ago, that program was modified and increased, so a community or a township with a population under 9,500, the credit amount is 40%. So if you have an income-producing farm with a barn, and you use the state tax credit and also the 20% federal tax credit, you could be getting a 60% tax credit on rehabilitation of a building on your property. So those two together could, I mean, 60% is a really substantial program. The other potential for tax credits from the county side could be through programs that you might consider implementing, like an NRA, a Neighborhood Revitalization Area, where it's a property tax rebate. So that's one of the ideas that's presented. So I'm ready for next. So the last chapter of the guide is, in my mind, really the what's next kind of piece, and it promotes six goals. And the first one of those is to promote historic listing and rehabilitation of rural buildings and resources. And so the idea behind this goal is if there are more buildings listed in a historic register, those buildings become eligible for existing incentives. So you don't have to create new incentives. You're just incentivizing people to get listed so that they can use the existing incentives. This goal also includes some ideas about promoting an advocacy group similar to the Lawrence Preservation Alliance or the Kansas Preservation Alliance, creating a Douglas County Preservation Alliance, an entity that can advocate for historic preservation. And it encourages consideration of creating a Historic Resources Commission for the county that would be similar to the Lawrence Historic Resources Commission. I know that's a, it's a big step, but it, in my mind, worth a discussion.
Stan, how would those two organizations you just talked about differ from the Heritage Conservation Council that we have?
So an organization like Douglas County Preservation Alliance could be more of an advocacy group. So they, so, for example, the Lawrence Preservation Alliance in the past has been able to go out and purchase properties. So the Turnhalla, for example, is a, is a building that Lawrence Preservation Alliance was able to purchase from the previous owner and keep it in holding until there was a development that came along that could use the building. So a group like that could be involved in that type of activity. On the, did you want me to say something about a Historic Resources Commission? So the idea behind a Historic Resources Commission is to provide more local oversight on how historic resources are developed moving forward. So, for example, the Lawrence Historic Resources Commission reviews projects that involve historic listed buildings and provides feedback on approaches that are in the best interest of the historic property. And having a local input on that versus having that happen through the Kansas Historical Society office would be a good advantage, I think.
Stan, I was drawing on page 60, and you're talking about this goal. It says investigate the opportunity, and I underlined the challenges of creating a Douglas County Historic Resource Commission. Can you talk about what your group has thought of when you think about, you sort of illustrated the opportunities there? What might be some of the challenges?
Mike might be able to jump in on this, too, but I, you know, anytime there's an entity that is reviewing projects, it brings in some questions about the, just making sure that the intent of the historic resources goals are sort of the top level of consideration. It's, do you want to say something, Mike?
Yeah, if you don't mind my jumping in here. I mean, the principal challenge for the county is that it requires additional staffing. They have a full-time staff person who spends most of her time reviewing projects that come before, and a second person that spends a good portion of her time doing the same work over at the, at the city. And right now, a lot of that work probably doesn't get done. If somebody is going to do work on a historic building in the county, it should be reviewed. The state should review it, but if no, you know, it's like if a tree falls out in the middle of Alaska and there's nobody around, you know, and, and the results of that may be that a property has work done to it that disqualifies it from the register, if that, you know, when that comes to light. But, but the biggest challenge would be, it would require additional staffing. Caitlin could not handle that work and do the other work that she's doing now.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just maybe, since it's a work session, say something about that. You know, I think, yes, that's a technical challenge, Mike. You're exactly right. But I also think there's, you know, we have had instances, one that's very personal to Douglas County, of a building that maybe has some historical significance, and then it, you know, use the word oversight, Stan, you know, like, at what point do we balance, you know, how do we find the balance between preserving our historical resources and we may have another use for that land or that facility in a different way? And I think that, that's the more adaptive question, you know, that, that I think it's important to elevate when you, you know, put something together like a commission and give it power and oversight and things like that, that I think we need to talk about and be very thoughtful about, because while for one side it could be seen as very much a win, you know, and that we're really working hard to preserve historical resources, another side may say, you know, I'm not sure we needed that, and it may now be create a hindrance to some development or something I wanted to do with my property. I'm not supporting either side there. I'm just trying to elevate that.
And further to that point, you know, you, outside the government arena, I mean, government can decide to do with its property what it wants to do, but, but you can't compel somebody in Kansas to, you can't compel somebody in Kansas to put their property on a register. And unlike the city of Kansas City, which just told some folks down the streetcar corridor that they couldn't redevelop their land because the building was historic, even though it wasn't yet covered by protection, there's nothing like that in Kansas. So what, what, what the guide is seeking to do is provide incentives for people who are interested in putting their property on, to do so, to be able to take advantage of financial incentives or other things. Once they do that, I mean, there's some obligations that go along with that. If they want to keep it on, if they want to keep having access to the, to the tax credits, then, you know, then they've got to play by the rules. But, 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 but it's not the state imposing that, that protection on.
And I do want to point out that the guide really does encourage adaptive use of buildings and creative new uses of buildings, because as Megan mentioned, an unused building is not going to last very long. And if there are new uses for it, and we can somehow help support that, either through some type of incentive, then definitely that's worth encouraging.
One of the goals, as I look through this, that I would love to see incorporated in a guide like this is, how do we, now that we know what kind of resources we have, how do we prioritize those? Like, what's, what's the most important, what stories do we not have captured? So I'm not really thinking in terms of like, what's the best building, but like, what buildings or structures carry the stories that we need to keep preserved? All of that within the context of willing landowners, but having identified so many resources also means that we now have kind of a job to do in terms of if we ever expect to build anything, grow anything in the county, we need to have some guidance on what, what to value.
Right. So one of the ideas is potentially to, along that line, is to look at what are the most endangered types of buildings, and what kinds of things could be done to help, if we want to, to help keep those into the future. So some of the ones, so, and there have been some changes that have, have encouraged keeping older buildings. So in the past, when we were only allowed to have one house on a property, it wasn't uncommon for an old farmhouse to be torn down so that a new house could be built. But the zoning regulations are being modified in a way that will allow for an accessory dwelling unit, and there's some potential to create even more incentive through that process, where if it was a historic listed, a historic farmstead, then maybe there's, it can be a bigger building, or there may be some other things that could become incentives through that process. But, you know, barns are, are sort of one of those endangered things, because older barns are way too small for modern equipment, and so there's always a bigger metal building on the, on the site, and if you don't need the old barn for anything, it's not going to get fixed up.
You mentioned prioritizing kinds of buildings that are endangered, but I think it's prioritizing the stories that go with the building. So I think a story kind of is the guiding, as opposed to, I mean, the structure is what we can, you know, measure and see. But I think the next step is, is how do we find the stories within there that we really need?
Yeah. And so the stories really come to life when a National Register nomination comes together, because that's really a document that gathers the information about a particular property and about the people that are associated with that property. So the, the five properties that went through the listing last year, several of those are moving on to the next step and sort of implementing some of the things that were discovered through that process. So, okay. So, okay, great. So, so Goal Two is, is looking at incentives for preservation and rehabilitation. I've talked about a lot of these, and I've mentioned the NRA as a potential idea. And I think the other possibility are some additional zoning bonuses for, if you have a historic listed building, you get some bonus in the zoning regulations for a use or something like that.
I can add a bit of context there, too, Stan. So, in terms of zoning, so we have met with the team at zoning a couple of times, and they've provided a substantial amount of comments and put a lot of work into this as well. And so, that'll be an ongoing conversation, you know. You know, I've gotten to work with them closely through the open space process as well. And so, you know, over time, now that we have this information kind of presented here, we can work with them to see if there's any ways that they think would be beneficial for promoting historic preservation, along with all the many priorities that they have through zoning. So, this kind of gives a start, but it doesn't hold us to anything and kind of starts that conversation.
Yeah. And we did have a lot of really good conversations with planning staff. I mean, by the end, they were really on board.
Sarah, can you maybe talk a little bit about NRAs? And I'm familiar with an NRA for a municipality and the county's role in that, and that it would have to be approved by school board and things like that. How would that impact townships and other taxing entities? Are NRAs able to be done?
I, I think NRAs could be done in the unincorporated area. You know, from how I understand that the regulations are written, townships wouldn't necessarily weigh in. In that situation, they would be, if a district was created, the rebate would go against the school district, so the school district would not receive that, and then the county would not receive that, and the township would not receive the revenue. But that's how it would be set up, is to sort of...
Just those three? So, like, I, I'm in a rural taxing area, and there are a dozen probably taxing authorities on my bill. Does that impact all of them?
We'd have to look into that. I mean, I, we don't have, I've never done one in a rural area before to, to sort of know, but generally, it abates, I mean, it rebates all property taxes of, of the increased value.
Some of these, some, some of the kinds of incentives that Stan's been talking about may require some legislative action, not, not at the county level, but at the state level. I mean, it may be that, that the state would consider that the value added by restoring a, a listed barn, if it takes it from essentially zero value to $20,000 or $30,000 in assessed value, should never be taxed. I mean, and that, and they could do that by, by, by aligning that with, with the decision to have the property listed and then to have any work that's done on it, done according to the Department of Interior standards and those sorts of things. I don't think, I'm not a tax lawyer, and I don't think doing it on an individual property by property basis is consistent with Kansas state law now. But there's no reason why it couldn't be, and, and that kind of thing.
That's how, that's how it is done, property by property in Lawrence. So, it's done property by property in Lawrence. They create a district around a particular property.
We did it on ours.
Yeah. I would say that, in addition to that, if the barn, if it's, if the barn is already agricultural use, like, they're hardly paying any taxes anyway. So, any rebate amount on the increased value of it probably wouldn't necessarily provide the incentive to restore the barn. So, I think we would just have to go through the math of some of those, some of those options.
Yeah.
And I'd say even with houses, it's difficult. You know, having, I, I've seen traditional Neighborhood Revitalization Act programs on houses, and it takes a lot to increase the value of a home. You know, fixing a porch that's been dilapidated isn't necessarily going to increase the value.
Right. Yeah.
But I think you're just right about accessory dwelling units, that, that change has saved a lot of houses, a lot of structures. And then that next step is, is not limiting the size of the new dwelling based on a historic structure, which tended to be smaller than we typically have. And I, I think those rules are in progress of being adopted, but it certainly, you know, hampered some families to wanting to keep a historic structure and keep it occupied and used even.
Yeah. Okay. Goal Three. So, Goal Three is to retain the distinction between urban and rural areas throughout the county. So, this is really a goal that is built on the existing zoning regulations. So, AG1, you know, recommends continuing to look at that as the primary zoning in the county and, and really considering closely any uses, that any requested change in use that reduces the agricultural area of the county. It also talks about AG2 in the same way, and a little bit about CP, but CP is currently not an issue because there isn't any new CP coming online. But one thing about a plan like, I'm sorry, a guide like this, is that it, I think it needs to think about the future, and pretty far into the future. And, you know, as Douglas County grows into the future, there's going to continue to be that pressure for rural residential. And the guide looks at some ways that could potentially incorporate some rural residential in potentially even more compact areas and allow for retention of a, a large area of agricultural that's related with that. So, the, the idea is, there are a lot of people that want to live out in the rural areas. I live out in the rural area. And there may be a way of doing that, and there are places, other areas around the country that are approaching that as a, as an issue. And so, I think in the long run, that may be worth looking at as the county.
I think that's another area that I think we, as commissioners, would like to see some guidance, maybe from HCC, is how, what, what then changes over from no longer having a rural character in terms of, like, housing density? And I noticed that, like, for, for townships, the, the data for population density was from the 2010 census, and I suspect that by 2020, there's some major changes in some of our townships in terms of the population density. There's a lot of building going on there, and, and I, and in many ways, like, we take Waukerusa Township, for example, like, it is really hard to tell what is rural and what is urban within Waukerusa Township, in part because of the way they do roads, but that's certainly not the only one that's approaching that kind of settlement pattern.
Yeah. So, I can't, I think the next goal, no, I'm sorry, go back one. So, one other piece that, maybe it's in Goal Five. I've gotten confused about which goal has which thing. Let's go ahead to Four, and then if I miss it, we'll come back. So, Goal Four is to increase awareness of workforce opportunities related to historic resources. So, if, if you want to have your historic wood window repaired, who do you call? There aren't a lot of people that currently know how to do that. So, it creates an opportunity for some partnerships. So, high schools, the trade schools in the community, you know, helping to train a workforce that knows how to do masonry work properly and not use the wrong mortar when they're working on a brick or a stone building, and just how to glaze that wood window. And, and the other potential partnership would also be with KU at the Department of Architecture and, and with the Historic Preservation Certificate Program, and having students assist with historic structure reports, national register nominations, you know, potentially even historic rehabilitation projects. You know, the students don't always have to build something new. They can come in and rehabilitate a, a barn or a farmhouse instead of building a new house. And then the third piece of that one is related to bringing people to the community to do work sessions, training sessions on how to do historic preservation work, either construction or even on the nomination and planning side of things. Okay, number five. So, promote historic preservation through governmental policy, regulations, and resources. So, this is the one I was thinking of. We've already talked about ADUs and how that's been a, from a historic preservation standpoint, has been a good change, and more changes can only help with that. This section talks about some other potential ideas. So, there are sector plans that have been prepared for areas around Lawrence, primarily along the edges of Lawrence. Some of those sector plans include a little bit of historic information, not very much. So, looking at those, looking at those plans and incorporating a more historic-centric element to them would be good. And then, in the southern urban growth area, south of the Waukerusa, it recommends a sector plan for that area with an especially strong historic resources section, and that there are a lot of really good farmsteads and farm buildings out in that area.
So, so far, that, that planning work has been through the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Office?
Yes, right.
And scheduling those and getting those brought up to date has been slow. So, are you aware of timelines for each of those? I, I think some of them have been scheduled, some of them haven't, but they're all a long ways out, in part because they're competing with neighborhood plans that are seeing development and redevelopment pressures, too. So, there's a great need for all of that, and it certainly needs to involve some of our historic information that we're gathering, too, but we, we're behind on all of them.
I know that I was contacted by one of the planners for historic information for one of the sector plans. So, I, I know now we'll have a place to send folks to get the information, and I sent them the survey report for that township. So, hopefully, we can continue building that relationship between planning and zoning to make sure they have access to this information.
Let's see, were there any others under that one that I want to talk about?
Speaking of having access to the information for planning processes, I know some of our environmental data, like native prairies and such, that's been kind of highly guarded information, that's not been made available in the public process. Is this similar, or is this all public record in terms of property by property, or is that really up to the landowner?
So, all of the information that's in the KHRI is public accessible. Any photographs that were taken on a property, only the exterior photographs are on, in the database, accessible to the public. Interior photographs are not accessible to the public. So, yeah, archaeological resources are not public.
Just because that, that information is public doesn't necessarily mean that it's being captured by our planning staff?
Correct.
So, I guess that's my question. Does anyone know if this level of, of data is going to be available for those projects?
I, I also sent them the, the link to the KHRI. It's a, just a website, and you just got to click to the map. But I, I pointed them in that direction, too, and I'll continue to share that as best we can, because it, it is remarkable. It's, it is all publicly accessible, and you can click and learn all about each structure.
And I, there's been a project in progress to get the KHRI data linked to the county GIS. Is that still in process?
Yeah, that's a goal. That's definitely a goal, is find a way to link the KHRI data to our public property viewer, but that'll, that'll be a, a task. But I know that's been highlighted by HCC in the past as a priority.
Okay. And I think the last one. So, Goal Six is to promote preservation, rehabilitation of historic resources, focusing on agriculture, small communities, and lake resources. So, this is kind of an overarching kind of goal. So, one of the things that everybody tends to forget is that Clinton Lake is going to be 50 years old very soon, and so, the resources are not, yeah, the resources around Clinton Lake should be surveyed, and those haven't been surveyed yet. So, that's a, a good potential future project. There are some ideas in this goal related to encouraging traditional and innovative farmsteads and, and possibly creating an adaptive use tour. People like to see things that have been done and buildings that are being used in new and creative ways. And the more people see that, the more ideas people come up with, so.
I've got a question. So, you mentioned Clinton Lake turning 50 years old soon earlier in this presentation. Caitlin, as you identified, the, you know, historic resources defined by that benchmark of 50 years, what kind of plans or discussions have been had about, like, is this document something that we periodically add addendums to? Is it considered a living document? Like, i- is there a plan for how to, in sort of a streamlined, more efficient way, identify those resources as they become historical?
I think the primary next step, so I think this guide will live kind of as it is. Currently, we can always add to it, but the survey process, we're completed now, but eventually, as time passes, we'll probably need to resurvey, just kind of the general survey process. So, that could be a potential future goal of HCC, you know, once some number of years have passed, to resurvey the county, and that might be a little less resource intensive since we have a lot of the data available, and that can help capture some of the gains or losses of, of that survey process. But I think that's definitely a, a goal in the future, then, to revisit some of that data that's been collected.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, and I think it seems not super imminent or urgent by any means, but smart to think about what a sort of incremental timeline into the future, you know, for looking back and deciding to do additional survey work or some sort of, just thinking about mechanisms for sort of cataloging potential sites or resources along the way, so that it is not as labor-intensive. But this does seem like a good foundation for that. I just, you know, history is living, right? So, we're constantly...
So, the whole, the whole survey process over the 10 or 11 years, how long, however long it took, was sort of an evolving process as well? I know the, the first surveys, really, when the survey was started, there, no one had any idea of how many resources were going to be looked at. And, and as the program progressed, really, starting, we were able to start getting a list from the county appraiser that would have a list of properties that they were aware had buildings that were 50 years or older on them. So, the, even the reconnaissance surveys, we would start with a list of properties. We weren't just driving up and down roads looking for old things, which is kind of how the first one was done.
You know, there are other ways, too, to identify buildings that might be, that might not have been eligible at the time the surveys were done, and that don't involve sort of a comprehensive resurvey. I mean, the, the county or somebody could send a, a survey around to folks and identify, ask them to identify. There, there's a process for individuals to have a property identified as potentially eligible by, by filling out a preliminary site inquiry report and, and those kinds of things. And it might be at least, the, the idea of, of having the county redo what it took 10 years to do the first time, any time in the next 15 or 20 years, is just, just probably not a task that's worth funding. But there are other ways of sort of getting the information out there. If you think your building has some historic significance and it was built before such and such a date, consider filling out this form. And then there are ways of communicating that, and, and an advocacy group could, you know, help in getting that information out.
So, one thing I know for sure is that the surveys that were done did not capture every building that's more than 50 years old, because there are, are properties that I know no one drove up the driveway because there was a gate closed. And so, I'm, I'm certain of that.
I appreciate that point, and I appreciate your point, too, Mike, and I think that that's, you're right, it's too resource-intensive, in my opinion, at, you know, at first glance, to think about sort of a... You know, at first glance, to think about sort of a reiteration of the process that got us here. But I think a lesson from it is how to sort of increase public engagement, awareness and engagement, and empower people to consider those options and, you know, know where to go for that information, I think is helpful. One other question I had, sort of back to talking about planning and our planners for the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission and any projects that go through that planning staff. I'm thinking about Udora and Baldwin and LaCompton too, and specifically about the growth of any or all four of the cities. So as city boundaries, city limits grow, you know, what kind of consideration might this tool be? So I just wanted to say that out loud and in case there hasn't been some conscious, you know, conversation with planners and staff in those smaller cities. In particular, Udora is on the cusp of definitely annexing, right? Their city boundaries are going to grow soon. So having awareness of this and it being a tool through that process is important.
Yeah, that's a wonderful idea, Karen. You can go ahead if you'd like. But I think that, yeah, so kind of here, just outlining a couple of uses of the guide. So one of the primary uses for Douglas County staff and then by extension, potentially other planning staff, is just to make them aware of this information. And this guide will help because it's kind of in one place and help, you know, work with them a bit more and just making, building those relationships and making sure they know that this information is available.
A couple of things. First, how much I enjoyed reading this document and expect to read it again. And it was kind of a, can you name that place? So I think I'm about 50/50 on being able to do that. So really fun for that, for somebody who loves Douglas County history. I also just wanted to make sure, I don't know how aware people were of the surveys when they were going on and how amazingly valuable they were to our rural townships to get our stories elevated and captured and then have a public event where we talked about what was found and then neighbors shared stories with each other. So there was, it was quite a learning event, a really community event. I went to several, including my own township. It was a very valuable cultural event in itself. So I was always, you know, just very excited that we had put those resources into that project.
I know Amy's not here, but she is a big champion of these surveys and the work that we're doing in the rural areas. And really, if she was here, she would definitely highlight just how impactful these surveys can be. And this resource is almost entirely dedicated to the rural areas of Douglas County. So, yeah, I know she would probably have a little cheer moment too for that work.
Mike, I think this may be a question for you. I mean, on the use of this guide to shape goals and identify opportunities. But I wondered if there was any discussion on HCC? Because a lot of the goals that are here require resources, whether it be financial or people. And is the HCC sort of looking to, you know, develop action plans? What I don't want is all this great work that's done here, these goals identified, to come back to this eight years from now and said, "Yeah, that was a goal, but we never really got to it." I mean, sometimes we just need to put it forward and we say yes or no, but at least we dealt with it.
Let me answer it in two ways. First, let me start with the HCC and the relatively modest resources that we have at least some influence over. And the HCC does intend to use these, you know, some of the guidance in here in focusing our grant program. As an example, the barn program generated a lot of, I think, good buzz out in, among rural landowners. Look what I got, you know? And then that helped me get a heritage trust fund grant to redo my barn. It has not generated the number of additional listings on the register that we'd like to see. And so we've been talking about reshaping that barn program in a way to provide not only an engineer's assistance in assessing what needs to be done to the barn, but starting with a nomination. If you're willing to get your property on the register, then we'll help provide the cost of doing the historic write-up and the nomination. And then we'll follow it up with an engineer's, you know, that sort of thing, as an example. So that we're, so that what we are doing is ensuring the preservation of historic properties that are worth preserving, that, you know, that the state or the federal register feel are appropriate for being listed. So that's one thing. The other thing is I think there's a general acknowledgement that a lot of this is going to require, you know, required decisions above our pay grade at one level. But also that the ideas that are in this plan need to be incorporated into the thinking of the folks that are developing the open space plan. Because the preservation of historic resources is a part, you know, one of the goals of that plan as well. And, you know, I know there are no commitments one way or another about resourcing for that. But as that plan comes into place and thought, and thoughts being given to resourcing there and thoughts being given to what zoning changes might be appropriate or necessary or what incentives might be appropriate or necessary to get people to voluntarily put their property into conservation easements and whatnot, there will be, there will be a heritage element to that as well. And I think some of the resources issues may get ironed out down the road. There is nothing in the plan that requires additional funding today for HCC to get started, sort of moving in the direction that Stance and his team have outlined in the plan.
Might be a question for Caitlin. What resources would be needed? Or is it a reasonable ask within resources that we have to ask that this plan kind of be morphed into, like, what, how do we prioritize what resources we need to be looking at the most? What are the stories we especially need? Because I know of our grant programs, or like the state grant programs, are very structure-focused. And, but not all structures carry the same story or have, whether that's a collection of buildings or a particular piece of Douglas County history. One of the things I think of is the Douglas County Poor Farm, which is a story that is incredibly relevant to us today and the decisions that we make. But there's not a lot of structure there. And the structure that is there is not either the first or the second structure that was built for that purpose. So I think of things like that, like what falls through the cracks if we're just looking at structures?
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful question. And I think that kind of goes, so Mike kind of covered our first two next steps here. But going into looking at the natural and cultural grant program, we're going to be reviewing some of the criteria this fall. And so I think that's a great place to encourage, you know, structural projects that we might fund or other cultural projects that kind of fall through the structural gap. So I think that we're going to be reviewing the criteria with the knowledge of this guide and kind of seeing how we can promote stories of all kinds of Douglas County and also help refine what sort of structural projects we want to be funding, whether that's focusing on listing or projects beyond structures. So I think that's a great place to start answering those questions and then potentially can build on that if we find that we're not able to capture, you know, certain things. And I think, as Mike also mentioned, with the open space plan, kind of capturing some of that there and some of the conservation criteria that we're developing and considering those sort of priorities as well, I think that's also folded into the open space discussion, which we'll be talking about next week with you all.
So one of the things that the guide talks about is historic listing and some of the misconceptions about historic listing. And that if you list a building that you own, you don't lose your property rights. If you want to tear that building down, you can tear that building down. If you want to modify it in a way that, you know, replaces all of the materials with new materials, you can do that. The only recourse is that the building can be delisted, taken off the list. So it doesn't keep you from being able to do something to your building. If you want to list it and then use one of the incentives, one of the financial, the tax credit incentives, then you need to follow the guidelines of the National Park Service. But that's your choice to follow that to get the incentive. If you don't want to follow the guidelines, then you just don't use the incentives, so.
I think that is a great point and worth clarifying because I think in terms of like landowners with a historic building, there's a little bit of fear there that, you know, if I list it, do I still have control over what happens to it? All of those things are, you know, I think those are needing to be addressed, probably multiple times, especially if we want people to list properties so that that story is captured. Because that's part of what happens with it, is capturing that. So I appreciate you saying that very much.
Well, thank you very much for this. I know this was a lot of work and I'm excited to see where it will take HCC going forward and all our historic resource work. Commissioners, any other final comments or questions?
No, but it was a lot of fun.
I will, I mean, I do think it's an opportunity for us to sort of, when we get planning items before us, to go back to this guide and sort of figure out what's the history in that area. Now, whether we incorporate that actually into the reports, I think, is a bigger step. But that's something that I'll do and appreciate all the work towards that.
Thank you. And I want to thank the commission and the HCC for allowing us to be involved in the project, in the surveys plus the creating of the guide. It was, I spent a lot of hours thinking about how to organize the guide and what would go into the guide and got a lot of guidance from various people. And it's been a terrific process, so thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.